There go on just had some sensors very good so everything around here is working right.
Okay.
Besides. What you guys need.
I think so.
Alright, I'm good with that.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Good luck, see you later.
See ya.
What's all going on.
Yeah, keep us posted. Alright, alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
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 Call me in order and look for approval of the agenda.
I'd make a motion if there's nothing else that.
Second it.
We have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Who are the minutes from June ninth?
Hmm, I read through them and I didn't see anything in there. So I'd make a motion to accept them.
I'll second it. We have a first and first and second on the minutes and in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries general public concerns.
Yeah, I would like to ask you, I was here back in February, the proposal let us, our group take over. Possibly take over the management of the dam. We've never heard it getting back or kind of curious where you guys stand on that or what's going on with that?
Uh, I did go down and talk to Scott, he never returned. Call to me, so I'll go down to his office and have today and what he says about the insurance. So.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I was gone this last week, so I didn't get it done, but.
Yeah, let us know so we can proceed.
Okay.
You know, and the other question I have is you had, you mentioned there's somebody. Sorry, Gary Jensen, somebody said, does somebody now go in and spray weeds?
Oh, it's B N, B N W brush control.
What's his name?
Nathan Reithers.
A and W.
A and W?
B and W.
B and W.
Brush control.
Like Brett.
I think we got his card, card here somewhere.
I believe it though.
Yeah. Here's his card, you know, just pass it back to me.
Okay.
He's actually living in Laverne now. He built the house in Laverne, moved to Laverne. I don't know if he's moved in yet, but he's getting really close.
Well, let's see if it's legal to spray those weeds on that sandbar again. You know, I mowed him down last fall, but.
Yeah.
I knew they'd just come back. Uh, I'll mow them again if I need to, but I thought if we can spray them same time, I could help take care of that.
Yeah, cause I know they have a product they spray in our ditch that kills willows and stuff.
Okay.
Same.
Alright, thank you. If you let us know on that insurance, so we can proceed, that'd be great. I'll take a picture of this one right back in, I pulled it to cover it.
Okay, so I probably got several of them anyway, I'd keep it.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else?
I would, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we made that announcement from, uh. Dave Lee about the flags. He said, excuse me. He said he ordered twenty, uh, for the courthouse at seventy-two dollars a piece. Um, just to let him know, uh, he's got a few people that have. Have, uh, offered to pay for some of those, but if I can bring it up again. Uh, to get ahold of him up at the VFW, they would appreciate the, I think we had at least. Twelve to fifteen that were bad when they changed them over, so. Anyone interested, get ahold of Dave up at the. VFW and. I'll pay for them naked. Appreciate it, makes the board also very nice, so, thank you. Good evening.
Alright. It'll move down to Kathy.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Got all your agreements?
I just have the one, the same one that the board members have, so, um. No, I just brought in, um, the twenty eighty agreement, I mean, discussions regarding. Um, mental health advocate sharing kind of started back in February, um. With the Board of Supervisors, um, rep that deals with the mental health on each of the counties and we've. We waited hoping for maybe a little bit more direction from the, um. Administrative Service Organization, Iowa Primary Care, who is going to be taking over, just to make sure, right now, um. Reimbursement for the mental health advocate comes from the mental health regions and the regions, um. Will cease on June thirtieth, so the current contract for sharing was terminated effective June thirtieth, so. This is the new agreement that was drafted by John and sent out to the other counties. I'll be going to the other counties on. Um, their board meetings this weekend next, um. So, I mean, the other boards I hope are fully aware from their. Member who's received this agreement, all of the county attorneys have the agreement, um, I haven't personally talked to all of them, I've talked to. At least one and left messages for the other, just to make sure before I came today that they had, didn't recommend any. Changes or have any specific concerns, so I don't anticipate they will, but. I know John, um, as of last week had not heard back from them that they had any recommended changes or concerns, so. So I'm bringing it to this board to start with today since Humboldt is my, um, employer of record, so.
So does this go year to year or how is this set up?
Um, it's, it's set up, um, termin- uh, uh, yeah, it will continue unless terminated, any of the parties have sixty. I think it's a sixty day notice to terminate any of the parties for any reason.
Now, when you go, okay, do you, are you the person that will be in Poki or Webster or?
I cover, I cover the four, yep, I cover the four counties, um. Currently, um, I have been splitting time. I usually spend a couple of days a week in Webster County and, and C I C S has. Allowed me to use, utilize an office space and they will no longer have an extra office space because they will be coming, uh. Disability access point, so they will be serving in a different capacity, but. I don't anticipate that being an issue. I mean, it's nice to have Humboldt being my base because it's really like a twenty minute, twenty-five minute drive. Anywhere I need to go, so we'll just see kind of how that, that works, um, but yes, I travel to the other counties and. If I need to be there other than for a client visit or court hearing, um. Have downtime in between, I just find a space to, to work and continue to do that as I need to, so.
Yeah. Yeah. I got a question for the board. It says Humboldt County shall set the salary supervisors. Should we talk to the other counties supervisors or, I mean, just says we set the salary?
Well, I mean, how, how it's worked, I mean, I don't see that there should be any change. I mean, Humboldt's been my employer of record for twenty plus years and Humboldt has set the raises, I mean, I guess. No one else has brought that up, um, but if it needs to be, then that.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, it, it would just go off of the recommended. Annual percent raise year to year that you do, it's like.
This is Sandy, nothing, nothing will really change other than we'll get reimbursed from the ASO instead of from the regions. Before it was, um, both regions that were, well, before it was just CSS and then, then it turned to C I C S and then rolling hills. So it'll just be the ASOs and we'll just, um. You know, do the same as we always have in the past, past years for wages or anything like that.
Okay. It's just a question again, yeah. Alright.
It's a good question.
Alright, well, with that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the twenty eighty agreement for mental health and advocate. Provided for the Humboldt, Poki, Webster and Wright Counties. Providing you all join in, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, correct.
Yeah, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. There are none, motion carries. There we go, we'll send that off for the other counties too. What would I go to show that?
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I can take it.
Oh, it's fine with me.
Cause I can, I'll be meeting with Pocah, I'm on the agenda for Pocahontas. Tomorrow and then I will be on with Wright and Webster next week because their meetings are all on Mondays and Tuesdays, so. Split it up that way, so I can be present to answer questions if anybody had any.
Perfect.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, next on the agenda is Ben.
We have.
Good morning.
Morning.
How's it doing?
Good.
Just have the one official item for the agenda. To approve the fuel quotes for fiscal year twenty-six. That begins July one, uh, twenty twenty-five.
That's something that's coming right up.
Okay.
Two weeks away. Um, this year, W N H came in with the lower quote. For fuel, the way, the way we bid fuel is obviously what you see here. It's just their handling surcharge above the state average price, five day average, so.
Surprise, Russell's up that high.
Yeah, um. Honestly, this is the first time that we've gotten more than usually two quotes, so, uh.
Which is good.
Yeah, W N H and New Century are usually the, the two quotes that we get. Even though we send out every year, um, this year we were able to get four pretty competitive quotes.
I've never heard of New Century, they're pretty big.
Yeah, it's, so New Century is the ones that have our contract right now. Uh, it's New Century F S.
Okay. Are we still doing deaf through Edison?
Uh, deaf is through Edison for the boat shop and the other two shops are supplied by Casey Nielsen's. So. Shop, we shop veteran for most competitive prices as well.
Yeah, you get that bulk, don't you?
Yep, we've got bulk totes at every shop. Everything requires running on deaf now.
I know.
It's.
Russell's almost exactly double on.
Yeah.
Four M.
Yeah, I would deal with there.
I, yeah, it's.
It's the distance of travel.
Yeah, they're, they're all, they're on, you're all over the place. Especially when they got, don't they have the one on the top of the hill? Yeah.
Hmm.
Cause I used to, I used to get my fuel from, cause they're cheaper than W N H's kind.
Yeah, it seems like they double on everything.
Crazy. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the fuel quotes. For F, for Humboldt.
W N H.
Oh wow.
Okay, I'm first.
I'll second.
I have a second. All in, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries, there are fuel purchase.
Uh, beyond that, updates on construction, the box culvert on Virginia Avenue has all been set, um. Or the process of backfilling right now. So that job, weather dependent, should be opened up, I would think by Wednesday. Look, so. They really have gotten in and got moving. The box culvert on two hundred and fiftieth street, the old one has been removed. We've run into an issue. That we're trying to resolve right now, their city sewer line was only three inches below the existing. Crick bottom.
Oh. And it went right through there, huh?
Yeah, so we, um. I mean, we knew it was there, we were just told that it was going to be deep enough that it wasn't going to be an issue, um.
How big is that line?
They're in the process of, uh, using their, uh, bowler locator. To get it fully exposed and, and clear so that we can see. The size of the line. Depth, we'll get some shots on it and, uh. What we'll end up probably doing is an extra work order where we cut out and notch a box culvert to sit over the top of it. So. We've got eight inch concrete floors, we can't even set it at the existing flow line right now without hitting it, so. I'll talk to their general today after we get done with this meeting.
Yeah, it's kind of. Big, yeah, big problem.
Yeah. Well, it's not a forced main, at least.
Yeah.
Gravity.
Right. Yep.
Edit out and then you send it back in.
Yep. I mean, that's. What I visioned over the weekend was cutting the box culvert out, putting some sort of a. Collar around the outside, basically a, a larger collar so that if they ever have to replace it, they can just slide through there instead of disturbing the box.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So.
We're at.
On the south side.
Just barely caught it or?
Uh, I think it's. No, it's, it's gonna catch our. Second culvert.
Okay.
So. Yeah. Um, FEMA is wrapping up finally. Uh, we've got one of the projects fully signed. And waiting on final approval for the second project. Ford Dodge asphalt is pretty much done with their work that they've done here as far as slurry leveling. I don't know if you guys have been down on C forty-nine or the county low, county line west of Laverne, but. Right, it's nice what they've done. Uh, this morning I sent proposals from Blacktop Service to the city of Humboldt. For pavement repairs on North Sixteenth Street, east of Sands where it's all.
Yeah, that's, that's bad.
So. That is a fifty fifty split, city and county. As far as pavement maintenance and what we're looking at doing is basically going from just west of the trail. All the way east to Jerry Hasher Road, so.
That gets a lot of. Traffic.
Yeah, I suggested embargoing it, but cool thought, that would.
Well, you have all the trucks that.
I mean, if you embargo it, where you gotta turn up on County Kane go north?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Any combine or anything that can't get through the.
Low, low, I live the hay.
Yeah, everybody.
They was there, right?
Oh, I know.
The problem is, it's only like four seal coats.
Yeah, they, they're gonna hold up.
Yeah, but what we're proposing will be able to handle the loads that come. Drops, you know, say it, yeah.
Okay.
The. I think it'd be about forty thousand a piece of.
Do we have any, do we have any discussion on lowering the trail?
Uh, so.
I know it's, it's not our trail.
We, we, we talked about it, um. One, it's, it's, like you said, it's not our trail, um. It's only half our road. One of the options was to mill out what's there right now for existing. If we do that, that would be my suggestion, would be to lower the trail. But.
New idea.
I mean.
Then you're raising. Then you, then you're, you jumped from seventy-five thousand dollars to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Oh.
And that's without us doing any improvements to the trail in either direction.
Yeah.
That's just.
It's a lot.
Milling out and putting in like six inches of asphalt through that whole stretch, so. Uh, I sent it to Cole, uh. Pulled him to look at it and get back to me, assuming they have funds to, they're half, so. And the, uh, opening was sent to the paper this morning for. Engineering tech slash planning and zoning person, so.
So when will we find out, find out about your, um, curves, the point? Why you need the?
So the grant application that we signed last week, uh. The application is due, I believe, the end of this month and we should find out like two months later, so August sometime. The other one has been approved, the one for Valverde, Rutland and Avery's. And that one is set for let, letting date in two weeks, I believe, so.
Cause who was asking about that last Monday?
Ken.
Tegus.
Yeah.
Asked.
Oh.
Well, they're on Rutland, that some of the driveways are at a pretty good angle. So.
I'm not planning on paving the little triangle that he wants me to pave.
I don't think.
Oh.
He just made a comment that a couple of those driveways have fairly steep angle and you add on to that.
It's gonna make it steep and.
Well, we're only adding four feet.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Perfect.
That's all I have, do you guys have anything else for me? Uh, Rog's been looking at his phone for a while.
I know it.
Looks like he's got a list over there.
I, I don't know if it's a list or if he's just searching for a certain picture.
No, um. Adam Loomitall called me this weekend and he wanted to know, he cleaned behind, uh, the Avery section thirty-three. He cleaned behind, uh. Davis's place, um, Tony Davis's place and Kibbers paid for a half a mile ditch cleaning. He wanted to know if he could take that up to two tenth street, I got a picture of it on my phone back. He wanted to know if he could take that up to two tenth street. And I said, no, we got equipment, well, we do it. So I'm just addressing that to see if you'd be interested in taking it, cause there was water pooled in that corner. Um, according to.
Do they want to put it on private property?
What do you mean? Yeah, you can, I mean, I don't, I never asked Ken Kibbers if, I mean, I didn't talk to Ken.
I mean, it's open ditch to the road right of way, right?
Yeah. He cleaned that whole half mile of that south fence line, I didn't know he was doing it. I went over at half hand again. And I asked him, I said, uh.
He cleaned the, uh, waterway, is that what you're saying?
An open ditch, yeah. So it was private, so.
Yeah.
There is no drainage district there.
He can do it or he wants to.
So, but anyway, he was gonna take it up to, to, uh. North of there and he wanted to know if he could go to that corner and I said, no, that's, no. But it's something that I thought I'd throw here because you're here and see if it would, uh.
Is he just wanting the ditch cleaned out or is he wanting to continue the open ditch up?
No, no, just clean the ditch up. Cause there's water pooling in that corner.
Yeah, I mean, if I remember right, uh, Gary Nave farmed the northeast corner of that intersection.
It's rest now.
Years ago, we dealt with. Trees growing in that ditch and, and just perpetual ditch maintenance.
Totally, I told it to you, that's all I'm done.
When they went out to pull trees on their own.
Yeah, I remember that.
Which, so, I mean, as long as they didn't hit nothing.
Since I told him, no, I mean, why, that's why I was supposed to.
Yeah.
That's how my luck runs.
Let me look at it.
Thank you for spraying the weeds up on top of Avery's Hill.
Yeah, the guys missed it. So, we were out. When, when we were out spraying, we, we missed it, they, they sprayed it Thursday, I think.
They're already thrown over, I was golfing up there yesterday, no, they're, they're dead. Golfing. Roll. I took the grand kids over there.
Did you get the layers cleaned out, just cornstalks?
Yes.
How bad was it?
Uh, we ended up cleaning thousand twelve hundred feet.
Yeah.
I think we hauled. Two truckloads worth.
Thank you.
No question, where do you haul that stuff to?
What? Cornstalks?
Yeah.
We haul it to our dirt pile and mix it in with the dirt, it was nice compost, so.
Okay. Just curious.
Yep. But, good luck burning.
Yep.
Right, he wanted to burn it, but I don't know how, whether it was dry.
Yeah, I mean, the, the top burns, uh, when you actually get it going nice and hot, it's hard to slow down.
Yeah, cause I did that at my place and I had to call the fire department out.
Yeah, I heard. Last time we did it, we caught a maintainer, so. Yeah, we, we frowned.
I think, the fire department should. Do something every year on burning road ditches. Just burn completely off.
I'm not opposed to it.
I think.
I mean. What's it say, that's a lot of my having.
Lower time, but if they did the. Uh, it wouldn't hurt anything.
Make this clean up.
It'd melt every plastic intake we have.
Oh, yeah, that's, I mean, they'd have to watch for that.
I'd say, yeah, anything that we got the plastic in the ditch.
They'd have to, you have, have a sprayer, a spray.
Or a power pole.
Power pole and people that do.
Really sturdy.
Oh my god.
I still can't hear.
I'm gonna have to put a phone number in your hand, but when he calls me.
Just hears Bob's number, call him.
Yeah. So, thank you for coming.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
When Matt announces that at lunch, I should be hearing about twelve P.
Yeah, thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Alright, moving on down. We got, except and place on file, you know, manure management, man for Brad Peak, so. Six one zero six three. And Mason two site six five four one two. You have the stuff right here for that.
That's normal, they're things that are just updated on a yearly basis, so. I'd make a motion to accept those numbers as Rick stated.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Now we have approved payment to IDDA for dues of eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. And county mutual, mutual protection of three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. For a total of eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. These are membership dues, the first is based on the amount of acres in the county at three cents an acre. And I guess you don't think that the, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to the IDDA for dues of eight thousand two hundred and eighty and the county mutual protection. Of three thousand four hundred and fifty for a total of eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Is this consistent with last year?
Yes, there's no worries, the mutual protection money. Is to protect counties and lawsuits and it is. A shared pot of money.
No second.
Uh, first and second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all got left is community reports, oh, do you wanna talk this?
I just got a question about.
Okay. You would do, I do it in open session or do you wanna do that afterwards? Yeah, let's just do that first. We're really close to being done.
Yeah, I did, what y'all thinking else?
Okay, all right.
All right, I had, uh. I guess the only thing I did was Thursday, went down to the mobile food pantry and Diane. Just sent those numbers, so I'll quickly. Go over, um. For the Humboldt homes, they had, uh. Twenty-four families in phase one, phase two, twenty-two, phase three, twenty-one. Bode Livermore had fifty-five families members. Uh, the Humboldt drive-through. At a hundred and forty-four households and four hundred and fifty-four members for. Total of, uh, two hundred and thirty-six households. And five hundred and seventy-six family members, they had, uh, she said this is one of their biggest months. Ever, um, they had, we had a good group of people down there, thirty-six. Volunteers and the next pantry mobile is, uh, August fourteenth. Um, we did have a little backup in our, um. Sign in. Which. A couple of people. Uh, I. Gave her a recommendation that I think would work, but I'll have to see if we can. Make it work through their eyes, so. It gets bogged down and everybody comes in and then they have to funnel them to the people that do the sign in and. All of us are standing up there waiting to. And then. They get. What, twenty cars through? At the beginning and then all of a sudden you're still signing people in and they're clear out on Fifth Street, so. It was kind of a. Bug.
Chick-fil-A start walking up the line, signing.
We, we tried to go down and talk to them and they shut us down.
You know, so.
All they need, all they, all they need is another person with a clipboard at the gate and make two lines. Really simple. We got shut down, Bruce Wash just walk over and.
I knew it was, but I think it's a workable. My opinion is we just give them a sheet with the name or what information they need and they go through the gate. You hand them the sheet and by the time they get to the place. Where they sign in, they hand it to them, sign it and we move. We're not reinventing the wheel, we're just trying to feed people, so.
West County hands out slips to people in line. And then they say.
Even. Doesn't make any difference, they're sitting over there doing nothing, so. They should have enough time to fill it, cause it doesn't take them very long, but it's just. Wait till they pull up to drive to.
Yeah, well, then they, then they chit chat for a while and that.
Yeah, well. So anyway, that was, um, next August is the next one there, so I'll shut up.
She's, she's there, but not.
She froze earlier.
Um, Tuesday at public.
I had to shut my video off because, well, needless to say, I got somebody screaming, but I had nothing last week.
Sounds like you got problems.
Uh, let me tell you, it's been a fun day.
Well, good luck.
And night.
Tuesday at public safety and we're talking with, uh, Jacob Miller, trying to figure out who's actually gonna take charge. And make these, the decisions for the supervisor role. So we decided that. Him and Dean. Will make the ultimate decision. If it was something serious and it's something really expensive they need to purchase. Then they'll contact one of us at the supervi- uh, supervisors, either you or me.
Okay.
So. That went pretty smooth. Moffat meeting Wednesday. Goldfield Vet Clinic is closed. And a young lady, and she's bought it. And she's got five different vets from all over the state of Iowa, they're gonna work there, they're gonna turn into a. Rescue boarding slash vet clinic for. Dogs or cats, so. If somebody in the Moffat's got a problem, the dog, they'll take it over there and they only charge this. Costs. For just, uh, medicine, they won't charge any for the doctor or anything like that, for the vet.
Like murdering and spading, they won't charge nothing?
No.
Wow, that's, we, there's huge check into the, that for that.
So they're just trying to help the community out to Lake County, Alamo County, Webster. Mobile pantry on for a Thursday. With Bruce and. Mike, that's it.
Uh, Wednesday, I met with Taylor, Tyler Smith at Run, uh, Rutland, section three and four, um, he had a. Discussion whether there was a main underneath of them wells or not, and I walked the ditches, looked down every intake out there. There was no, if we, if, if the main would've went that way, we would've jumped into another drainage ditch. He's. He. Conceded that there wasn't any main underneath, should've underneath of that, uh, those wells aren't enough there. Uh, food pantry on Thursday, um. Went it out by Dave Telford's and actually looked at that water. Mitigation flood blame thing, um, he's taking care of it. Uh, from what I understand, what he told me, he's, he's doing all the mowing, the spraying, the tree removal. For the next three years, then after that goes back to the, the landowner themselves, I didn't really notice that. But, just. Something that probably has been to. Become something we'll have to look at later on.
So that's over. East of Gilmore?
Yeah, I was. Like I said, he does all the spraying all the morning, he, he mowed it two o'clock in the morning.
Where's his, I, I know where David is.
That's huge project out there, he's, he's maintaining the whole thing. Yes, he, he does all the spraying.
So he's hired to take care of that.
For three years, then after the third year, we got the landowners that actually owned it.
Have the responsibility.
Go back to them.
I suppose I hired him so that I make sure it gets established well and.
Yes.
The weeds don't take over and. So, things like that.
We was just, we discussed, uh. A lot of things and I said, well. How is it, how's it going to pay for itself when that time comes, so, well. It, it's non-productive land, so it's a negative net gain that you're not gonna get anything, but you still have to maintain it. So hopefully that. He and I will come along, your conversation, I come along, grab it, but.
Well, yeah, pheasants, wherever, there's some, there's some. How much?
Thirty-five, I think, fifty to a minute. Now, thirty-five acres, thirty-five hundred, but thirty-five, there's quite a few acres there.
How many do we there?
I'm guessing somewhere, I'm probably eighty.
Too much for just us to bite off right now.
Okay, that's all I got. All right, uh, you had no leading time, so. Anything else we need to discuss?
Motion adjourned.
I'll accept that.
Sorry to do.
All in favor? We're adjourned at nine oh seven roughly.